Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our commission meeting. For all of you that observe, happy holidays on Monday from the great city of Pembroke Pines. So this is our roll call for our hearing, City Attorney.
Madam Clerk, if you will, Mayor.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good? Commissioner Schwartz?
Happy to be here.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus?
Here.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Second budget hearing, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Good evening. This is the second and final budget public hearing in accordance with Section 200.065 of the Florida statutes. It is, in fact, for the law and for the record, the second public hearing on adopting a tentative budget and proposed millage rate for the fiscal year 2023, 2024 for the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida. The purpose for the record is to recompute and to publicly announce the proposed operating millage rate of 5.6690, which is 8.91% above the rollback millage rate of 5.2052, and a debt service millage rate of 0.3410, as well as amend and to adopt the tentative budget for general fund, the utility fund, and all other funds of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, and to invite the public to speak regarding the proposed millage and budget rate. For the record, this is the second and final public hearing on both millage and budget as provided for by state law. There's a public hearing, Mayor. What follows will be both the reading of the ordinance with regard to the millage and thereafter the reading of the ordinance for the budget itself. This is a public hearing. Thank you, Mayor.
And then, City Attorney. Public, anybody from the public want to speak in this? I'll close the public hearing. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor.
Assistant Commissioner?
Mayor, having opened the public hearing and allowed the public to speak in the context of both items before the commission, the first item before the commission is the millage rate and the millage rate ordinance in accordance with Section 200.065 of the Florida statutes, which is the TRIM compliance statute. It is a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 2023-10 on second and final reading for the record and for the public's concern. It's an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, establishing the operating millage rate of 5.6690 or 5.6690 per thousand dollars as a taxable assessed property value, which is 8.91% above the rollback rate of 5.2052 for the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida pursuant to the 2023-2024 fiscal year budget in accordance with Chapter 200 of the Florida statutes as indicated earlier, and establishing the debt service millage rate of 0.3410 for debt service on the general obligation bonds approved by the city's electorate, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner.
A public hearing, City, anybody?
No.
Anybody? It's a public hearing, excuse me. Anybody want to talk in this? Okay, close the public hearing. Go ahead, City Attorney, one more? Are we ready?
Absent public comment, Mr. Mayor, you may call the roll if there's otherwise no further comment from the Mayor and Commissioner.
All right, we'll call the roll.
Mayor, I have a question for City Manager.
Go ahead.
City Manager, good evening.
Good evening.
Now, can you clarify the presentation on the CAFRA from two weeks ago as opposed to our financial statements? Twenty-four million, fourteen million, ten million?
City Attorney?
City Manager.
City Manager, all right.
I'm not sure of your question, Commissioner. I don't know what was on the agenda regarding that.
It was representation that there was $24 million available. There was a $14 million carryover, was it not?
In, yes, in the last year's budget, we had a $14 million carryover of projects that had not been completed in that prior fiscal year, and they were carried over. And they will be reflected in the end of, in the current fiscal year's CAFRA where those funds would have expended for those projects from the prior year.
Thanks for the clarification, sir.
Okay, ready to vote? Meanwhile, please. Vote. Vote by Commissioner Castillo, second. Second by Commissioner Good. Discussion. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
For the record, Mayor and Commissioner, the permanent number for both the Department of Revenue and for the public's consideration is number 2006.
Okay, we need one for BHP 12, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. The budget public hearing number two relates to the budget, which is driven by the millage. Also a public hearing, it is a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 2023-11 on second and final reading for the second and final reading of the city's budget. It is for the record and ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, and adopting the five-year capital improvement program for the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, in accordance with Section 5.08 of the city's charter, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for effective date. Item 2023-11 on the floor for consideration.
So vote. Vote by Commissioner Castillo, second. Second by the Vice Mayor. Discussion. Hearing done, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
For the record, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the item for the record is number 2007, the permanent number for the Department of Revenue and for those paying attention to the item of record this evening. Thank you.
Thank you all. We have a couple of proclamations to present.
We're going to do the roll call first, Mayor.
Mayor, you're going to restart the meeting?
No, for the regular meeting.
And then we can do other things, yes.
Call a roll, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
I am here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
I'm here.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
City Manager Dodge?
Here.
City Attorney Goran?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's start us all over again. That's so much.
Mayor, do you choose to do a pledge, if you will, just to start?
When I'm in, hold on.
A pledge.
The pledge. Give you the pledge.
Pledge, ladies and please, I'm lost today.
Thank you, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Now let's. Keep them straight, whatever.
Tonight is a special night, and we do have a presentation this evening, a proclamation that is not on the agenda. And this is a proclamation to Aner Gonzalez Day. Whereas after serving the City of Pembroke Pines for over 35 years, Deputy City Manager Aner Gonzalez will be retiring on October the 2nd, '23. And whereas Aner was born on January 29th, 1962, in Yagua, Cuba, and came to the United States with his parents, Dagoberto and Magali, when he was nine years old. He attended Liberty Baptist College on a baseball scholarship and earned a degree in business administration accounting in 1984. Aner has a son, Aner Junior, daughter-in-law, Lauren, three grandchildren, Reagan, Parker, and Riley. He enjoys fishing, hunting, and most especially, spending time with his family. And whereas Aner Gonzalez joined the City of Pembroke Pines on April 4th, 1988 as an accountant in our finance department, his dedication and leadership skills were quickly noticed as he was asked to take on more and more responsibilities throughout his years within other city departments. His various job titles included chief accountant, comptroller treasurer, assistant director of public services, internal auditor, assistant city manager, and finally, deputy city manager. And whereas Aner has proven himself to be a valuable asset to the City of Pembroke Pines and has significantly contributed to and assisted in each of the departments he has worked in with the utmost dedication, professionalism, and integrity, helping departments grow and evolve to meet the resident and business needs. And whereas Aner's knowledge of the city's financial structure and his dedicated work ethic resulted in city administration tasking him with many special important projects to the city. Under Aner's leadership, the charter school budget has earned the Government Finances Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the last 17 years. Whereas Aner is a founding board member of the Pembroke Pines Charter School Foundation and has been instrumental in fundraising efforts to include managing the mayor's charter school golf tournament for 19 years, in which has raised one and a half million dollars for the charter school. Whereas throughout his tenure, he has received numerous awards, including Employee of the Year by the Florida League of Cities in 2007. And whereas Aner is also a true mentor, working to guide his staff and share his wisdom and experience in government administration. Under his leadership, Aner has shared his knowledge with the next generation of city leaders who have already begun to take on bigger roles in the Pembroke Pines administration. And whereas the City Commission and city administration of the City of Pembroke Pines expresses its sincere appreciation and thanks to Aner Gonzalez for his dedication and commitment to the City of Pembroke Pines, and highly commend him for the man whom which he carried out many responsibilities and duties as a member of the city staff. He will be greatly missed by his colleagues and staff.
Now, there are five friends, the orders, by the authority vested in me as mayor of the greatest city in the world, Pembroke Pines, along with the City Commission, to hereby proclaim Monday, October 2nd, 2023, as Aner Gonzalez Day in the City of Pembroke Pines, and express our deep appreciation for your 35 years of loyal service to our great city. Congratulations.
We have a video that we'd like you to watch in just one minute.
And of course, we really, really have gratitude for you many years, to our great city. So we wanted to give you a key to the city to remember us by.
All right.
Mr. Gonzalez, accept our key. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm touched. I have so many good friends here.
As the commission is coming down, I just want to thank you for the support that the commission and Mr. Dodge and Mayor has given administration, myself, for all these years. I go back to many years ago when Marty Gajewski gave me an opportunity, and that opportunity led to where I'm at today. The manager, he trusted me for the past 14 years, and I thank him for everything he's done for you. Thank you. From here onwards, the Independence Days of Mexico and Chile fall on September sixteenth and September eighteenth respectively. And whereas this month recognizes the significant strides of Hispanics in the economic, political, and social growth of the U.S. And whereas the city of Pembroke Pines takes great pride in its Hispanic community's contributions to our city's arts, sports, academic science, and business sectors. And whereas the rich cultural heritage of the Hispanic population has greatly enriched the heritage, and we share a city, foster unity, and understanding among our residents. Now therefore, I frank the orders by the authorities vested in me as the mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, thereby proclaim September fifteenth to October fifteen, twenty twenty-three, as Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, and invite all residents to join with our Hispanic residents in celebrating the rich cultural heritage of the Hispanic population, and in attending events throughout the city that showcase their remarkable contribution to our community. Congratulations.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, thank you so much on behalf of Hispanic community. I calde, yes. Thank you so much on behalf of Hispanic communities, staff members, Board of Directors, but more importantly, our clients, families we serve every single day. We, Hispanic community, serve about twenty thousand families, become self-sufficient, seriously engaged, and productive every single year, and that's thanks to your support. And the support of special people like Angelo Castillo, former board member, board member emeritus. Thank you for celebrating Hispanic community's work, and thank you, more importantly, for celebrating Hispanics' accomplishments and contributions to the economy, the society, but more importantly, to this beautiful country. Thank you so much.
This proclamation is Hindu Heritage Month. Whereas the city of Pembroke Pines and the nation have been influenced by the extraordinary cultural, ethnic, linguistic, and religious diversity of its residents. And whereas Hinduism, the third-largest religion in the world, with an estimated more than one billion followers worldwide, representing fifteen percent of the global population, and approximately four million Hindu-Americans live across the nation, and the city of Pembroke Pines is home to significant Hindu-American population representing diverse ethnic backgrounds. And whereas Hindu-Americans promote the ideals of tolerance, alhizma, pleurism, and religious freedom, respect the diversity of all faiths. Anhizma, nonviolence, is central principle for Hindu-Americans, provides the ethical foundation of interest, environmentalism, and humorous living. World-renowned Mahatma Gandhi employed nonviolent resistance to lead the successful campaign for India's independence from British rule, and later inspired movements for civil rights and freedoms across the world. And whereas the Hindu heritage culture, traditions, and values have enriched our great city by providing invaluable solutions to many of life's problems, and often served as a source of inspiration, reflection, and contemplation for the millions of individuals who took to the teachings of Hinduism for guidance. And whereas Hindu-American community have contributed tremendously to the vibration and diversity of our great family-oriented city, making it being the name All-American City, one of the top one hundred best places to live, and one of the most integrated communities in South Florida. And number one, in Florida, is the best place to raise your kids. And whereas Hinduism has given birth to multiple other faith traditions with rich cultures and philosophies of their own, including Buddhism, Jainism, Sikhism, collectively referred to Dharma faith. And whereas during the month of October twenty twenty-three, the Hindu community will reflectively celebrate its heritage by focusing on its culture and diverse spiritual traditions rooted in Hinduism. Now therefore, I frank the orders by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, and on behalf of the City Commission, hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-three, as Hindu Heritage Month in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, and invite all residents to join with our Hispanic residents in celebrating the rich cultural heritage of the Hispanic population, and in attending events throughout the city that showcase their remarkable contribution to our community. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, thank you so much on behalf of Hispanic community. I calde, yes. Thank you so much on behalf of Hispanic communities, staff members, Board of Directors, but more importantly, our clients, families we serve every single day. We, Hispanic community, serve about twenty thousand families, become self-sufficient, seriously engaged, and productive every single year, and that's thanks to your support. And the support of special people like Angelo Castillo, former board member, board member emeritus. Thank you for celebrating Hispanic community's work, and thank you, more importantly, for celebrating Hispanics' accomplishments and contributions to the economy, the society, but more importantly, to this beautiful country. Thank you so much.
This proclamation is Hindu Heritage Month. Whereas the city of Pembroke Pines and the nation have been influenced by the extraordinary cultural, ethnic, linguistic, and religious diversity of its residents. And whereas Hinduism, the third-largest religion in the world, with an estimated more than one billion followers worldwide, representing fifteen percent of the global population, and approximately four million Hindu-Americans live across the nation, and the city of Pembroke Pines is home to significant Hindu-American population representing diverse ethnic backgrounds. And whereas Hindu-Americans promote the ideals of tolerance, alhizma, pleurism, and religious freedom, respect the diversity of all faiths. Anhizma, nonviolence, is central principle for Hindu-Americans, provides the ethical foundation of interest, environmentalism, and humorous living. World-renowned Mahatma Gandhi employed nonviolent resistance to lead the successful campaign for India's independence from British rule, and later inspired movements for civil rights and freedoms across the world. And whereas the Hindu heritage culture, traditions, and values have enriched our great city by providing invaluable solutions to many of life's problems, and often served as a source of inspiration, reflection, and contemplation for the millions of individuals who took to the teachings of Hinduism for guidance. And whereas Hindu-American community have contributed tremendously to the vibration and diversity of our great family-oriented city, making it being the name All-American City, one of the top one hundred best places to live, and one of the most integrated communities in South Florida. And number one, in Florida, is the best place to raise your kids. And whereas Hinduism has given birth to multiple other faith traditions with rich cultures and philosophies of their own, including Buddhism, Jainism, Sikhism, collectively referred to Dharma faith. And whereas during the month of October twenty twenty-three, the Hindu community will reflectively celebrate its heritage by focusing on its culture and diverse spiritual traditions rooted in Hinduism. Now therefore, I frank the orders by the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, and on behalf of the City Commission, hereby proclaim the month of October twenty twenty-three, as Hindu Heritage Month in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida, and encourage all residents to take time to recognize and participate and celebrate this special month. Ram, you want to come up?
Thank you.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager, City Clerk, thank you very much, and I'm very proud, because this city of Pembroke Pines has a Diversity and Heritage Board, and which I was appointed by Commissioner Tom Good. So we feel very happy that this is a very diverse, integrated city, and as a part of that Hindu Heritage Month member, I really thank you, the City Commission, because this is not possible until City Commission and administration does that. I was happy that before me, there was Hispanic Heritage Month. And our aim is to work with all, and just to let you know, recently, we joined hands with our Jewish friends, and we are going to celebrate Hanukkah and Diwali together. Yeah, and thank you, Mayor, you have given proclamations on Hindu Heritage Month, India Independence Day, and also a resolution on Diwali. So we are really thankful, and you have enumerated, so I don't have to repeat it, but we are very proud. For us, the family and the education is very important, and the culture is part, we love festivals, love festivals, and we like good food. So I'm really thankful for this proclamation on Hindu Heritage Month, and I hope you shall continue to support us, and we will be happy to support you, whatever endeavor you do. Thank you. Namaste.
Thank you. Take the chair. Thank you, Robbie, doing a great job for our city. All right. City Clerk?
Yes. Consent item number one was pulled from the agenda by administration.
Okay. How about items at the request of the public?
No items, Mayor.
Commission audit report?
None, Mayor.
Appeals of Board of Adjustment?
None, Mayor.
Announcements of Board and Committee appointments?
No announcements, Mayor.
Okay, we have a consent agenda, items one through twenty-one. What is your pleasure?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to pull fourteen A for a clarification, please. Thanks.
Hold on. Fourteen A, just now. Any others?
Mayor, I'd like to pull number seven.
Yes, Mayor.
Yes.
Item ten and thirteen, please.
All right, hearing that, I'll take the motion to support the consent agenda, other than the items mentioned. So moved by Vice Mayor, second by Commissioner Castillo. Discussion? Call and roll, please.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Let me get back here. All right, item seven, Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion approved the Second Amendment to the agreement between Broward County and the city of Pembroke Pines for participation in the consolidated regional E nine one one communication system, and the regional inter-local agreement providing for cooperative participation in the regional public safety intranet.
Nice, or second?
Okay.
Second by the Vice Mayor. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Mayor, ten years ago, we took on some responsibility in good faith. We've held up our end of the bargain. The county has not. I am a believer now that Chief, retired Chief Picarella was correct that evening with his perception. However, what I will say is this to Broward County Board of Commissioners and to Broward County Administration. I'm confident that if the Broward County Administration were to get out of the way and allow the law enforcement and fire rescue to be in charge of the decision-making process, we would have the best system in the nation. We must elevate all dispatch personnel to first responder status. By doing so, they will be paid better, working conditions would certainly improve, the vacancy rate would certainly be reduced, and our first responders would be safer, as well as the public. That's it, Mayor.
Okay, further discussion. Hearing that, call and roll, please, City Clerk.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item ten, City Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to award IFB number PSPW dash twenty-three dash fourteen, site work for equipment and machinery building to the most responsive responsible bidder, SoCal Shaker Plates and Construction Site Services LLC DBA National SWPPP services in the amount not to exceed seven hundred twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which includes an owner's contingency in the amount of thirty-three two hundred and fifty dollars.
There a second? Second? A second motion, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
My question is, when I, when, my first question is, isn't, is this building already built?
City Manager?
Yes, I'd like Mr. Buckman to come in if he have questions.
Oh, good, I saw, I did see him come in.
Do you need your name? Position, please.
Stephen Buckman, Public Services. Yes, Commissioner, the building has been constructed.
It's the building that we see, that's like the roof and the covering for equipment and stuff to be placed in, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. When I, when I look on the item tonight, it says that the amount is not to exceed seven hundred twenty-three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That's the agenda item. But when I pulled up the backup for it, the site work for equipment and machinery building, the projected cost estimate listed there was three hundred and ten thousand dollars. That's quite a very big difference in, in the numbers, so I was hoping that someone could explain that to me.
Well, I mean...
What it is.
Yes. Unfortunately, I can't give a really great explanation.
I need a greater explanation.
I'm doing, going to do the best I can. So the, the cost estimate that we had developed was done by our engineering department based on different values that they have set in their system. But unfortunately, the way the market has been going lately, prices have been really going crazy, and we actually had, we consulted with CGA as well on the pricing, and they were pretty close to the same price that we had as far as the budget amount that we should go for.
Because what I'm, what I'm looking at, the date of this, that was in, you know, in the backup part of it, was that the proposals were being accepted until August ninth of twenty twenty-three, which is just a month, six weeks, six weeks ago. So what you're saying then, and I, and I've heard before about the pricing and everything going up and everything costing more, this is more than double what we even thought of as an, of an estimate, and it was an estimate that was fairly recently, August ninth, when all this was put together. So from August ninth, six weeks later, this went from, from three hundred and ten thousand to seven hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars?
Yes, ma'am, and we went back and forth with engineering on several, several times, talking about the cost estimate, wanting to make sure that we had it the way, where it should be. We were all, we were all surprised when we got the bid. Unfortunately, we only had three contractors that were willing to bid on it. A lot of the things that are going on right now is everybody's so busy, so they're not even bidding on a lot of projects, and when they do bid on it, they fluff it up because they don't want to really do it, but if they're going to do it, hey, let's make some money. That's honestly the best answer that I can give you at this time. I don't have any other thing to offer, I'm sorry.
Well, no, I, I hear you and I appreciate that. But the... Um, but the building's already up.
Yes, ma'am. We were, we were doing this, this in phases. We built the building, then we're getting ready to do the site work, and then, then we're gonna start moving everything in.
So the actual building of the building is part of the seven twenty-three?
No, the build, the build, the building is.
This is just the site work aside from the building?
Yes, ma'am. So is what this is, is this the site work that has to go on?
The infrastructure, everything that has to go into the building, correct?
I'm sorry?
The infrastructure part of what has to go?
No, ma'am, this is all outside the footprint of the building. So this will be the parking lot, the drive area that goes around the building.
Right.
Yes, uh, the drainings is required by South Broward Drainage District that we're gonna have to put in. We're also doing a, a, a washdown station for the equipment, so that has to be done.
Right, I remember reading this, I remember reading this. So, so in your best guess, if you could, that, what, where are we gonna be at for the total cost from soup to nuts for this building to be there on the former campus?
Uh, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have that number with me right now because I don't have the number from when we constructed the building. But I think it was around, I'm, I'm on a rough estimate, around a million dollars. So we're looking at about two million.
About a two million dollar project by the time you get with these new numbers?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, further discussion?
Uh, Mayor, I have a question.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Uh, Mr. Buckland, good evening. Uh, this is the building that's got the big gray roof on it? The, the big gray roof, uh?
No, it doesn't have a red roof.
Gray roof.
Gray, okay, I'm sorry, I can't.
Yeah, it's a T.
Yes, yes, in the health park, yes.
Okay, um, they did a really nice job constructing it. Um, I gotta be honest, I can't get past the, um, uh, the cost. And I want to thank the Vice Mayor for bringing it forward. Um, we, we have, um, Mr. Dodge, can we wait? Is, can we wait on this item so that the market can be a little bit more, um, realistic? And come back and put this out for bid when, uh, pricing isn't in a, in a, uh, position where we're paying a lot more than what we should? I mean, your, your staff came up with a number and now it's like off, off the board.
Mr. Dodge?
Well, I believe a lot of the work has already begun, has it not, Steve?
We, we, we're, we're set up for it, yes, sir.
What's being asked for tonight?
But as far as the, the actual, the, the building has been constructed, we're ready to utilize it. All we need is the site work done to get it done, to start using.
Okay.
We could wait, uh, but waiting, there's no goal, there's no, no indication that prices are gonna be dropping anytime.
Yeah, uh, is it, is it material or is it labor?
Probably both, Commissioner.
Mr. Dodge, is, is there any, um, now I see the seven hundred thousand increase, uh, I'm sorry, the, the increase is, uh, is twice as much, right? So it went from, I mean, this basically just ate into the reserves we just approved. I mean, I mean, we, we just took, we just took seven to hundred thousand, that's seven oh five out of reserves. And we just took half of it, just like that.
All right.
This is, uh, this is for the current year, uh, budget, Commissioner.
But, but we're.
Not for the next year's.
We're carrying it over, though. I mean, we, we certainly have, we certainly have encumbered funds, yes?
If you, uh, hold on one minute, please.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to get back to.
No, I understand what you're saying, but as Mr. Buckland is saying, the potential for any kind of reduction at this point, I think is, uh.
All right.
All right. All right, any further discussion?
Uh, uh, sorry, just wanna make sure I have the right number. Hold on.
I mean, if. So, so if I may, Mr. Buckland?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I may, answering the question. If you look at the financial impact, uh, the funds are budgeted and they are available in, uh, a line item that we have for land and building. So evidently, in that line item and other projects we've had through the year, some may have come under, some may not have been done. So we're not eating into, um, uh,
We're not.
any, any other additional funds.
Okay.
So they're not coming out of contingency, certainly not from the next fiscal year. If it, if it had been, it would have been in the current fiscal year.
So I guess the final question is, why would go out so late? I mean, it's August ninth. Why didn't we go out on January ninth? Or November ninth or October ninth? Why did it take this long to put this out?
Well, the, the building had been completed and they really needed to complete the building first before they knew what all the, uh, outside work would be.
Mr. Buckland, is that how we usually do it? We build the building and then we put stuff around it?
We, we, we built this building that way because we only had so much funds in each year's budget. So we built the building, we budgeted for the site work in the next year's budget, which, uh, once that, that budget came into effect, we contracted with, uh, an engineer to do the drawings. And once the drawings were put out, and that's when, when we did the building.
We, uh, do we have a, uh, the, the current construction of the building, is it TCO'd? Or is it CO'd? Or is it CO'd?
C.
CO, CO, okay. And when was that CO'd?
I don't have that date with me right now.
With, within the last, within the last twelve months, yeah?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, because I, I, I watched, I watched it being built. It, again, they did a nice job. I just don't understand why we are going out the bid so late in a budget year, knowing that the market conditions are, are the way that they are. I mean.
Mr. Dodge?
I can't answer that, Mayor. Uh, staff controls, the schedule for those things, and I don't believe they were ready at the time.
We weren't ready, we didn't have the drawings completed, and we did not know that, that the market was going to go the way it has.
All right. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I have a, I have questions.
Who's that? Commissioner Good, go ahead.
Commissioner Schwartz, are you complete?
Yeah.
Okay. I, I just wanna say, uh, kudos to the Vice Mayor. Great, great capture on, on the day, on the information. And Commissioner Schwartz actually, uh, brought in some additional light to this. So, um, you know, the, I, 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 I don't know that any of the answers have been a, uh, answered or, or any of the questions have been answered. Um, the question was really simple, like, what's the justification from going from, you know, from A price to double the price? And the answer was, I don't know. And then we had recommendations by city staff. We had recommendations from Calvin Giordano, who is our trusted partner in this city, who had a very comparable number on an estimate. And yet we still have double the price. And yet no answer has been provided in terms of a justification why that is, just we don't know. So I think we should give time for an answer to be provided to us because I'm not voting on a I-don't-know answer, sorry. And, and, and I, and I understand, uh, the position that you're taking. But I do, uh, recognize that there's such things as value engineering. Maybe we've, uh, designed something that was bells and whistles too much. You know, maybe we just need a basic, uh, layout. So, you know, so, uh, but we still should be able to have a response in terms of why we're, we're being asked. You know, this isn't like from one dollars to two dollars, it's from three hundred to seven hundred. So I can't support this. And unless one of my colleagues want to defer this until there's a better answer, um, I just won't support this tonight. Thank you.
Mayor? There's a motion to defer? Mayor? There's a motion to defer, is there a second?
There.
Second by Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Castillo?
Who made the motion to defer?
Commissioner Good. Standing right next to you.
I, I, I offer that to my, uh, colleagues who brought the issue up. So if she wishes to defer it, I will let that happen.
Well, she seconded it. Go ahead. Commissioner Castillo, go ahead, on the item?
So I'll either make or second the motion to defer. How would you like to handle it?
I thought we had a motion second. If not, you can, you can do either one.
I'll sec, I'll second Commissioner, uh, Vice Mayor's motion to defer.
All right.
Hold on a minute, I want to clarify. I did not make a motion to defer.
I, I'd like to make a motion to defer.
Excuse me, excuse me. Commissioner Good made a motion to defer.
He did not.
And it was seconded, yes, he did.
Well, that's what I heard too, I'm sorry.
And it was seconded by Commissioner Schwartz.
All right.
He just, he just said he didn't.
All right, now, now, we have it straight, I'm sorry. It's confusion. Now we're on a motion to defer. Call and roll, please, on a motion.
When, when, when will we hear this again? The item?
Well, we, we gotta have a, a date. You gotta defer to a date.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just for the record, if the motion to defer is to a time uncertain, and it's to an uncertain point in reference. If there's a time certain, then that should be made in a motion.
Anybody want to make a amendment to the, I, time certain?
It's your alleged motion, uh, Commissioner Good.
I'll, I'll leave it uncertain and let staff, uh, find the proper answers. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right. Call and roll, please. Anybody have stats you're right? Go ahead.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saipul?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We're on Item Thirteen.
I have a question, uh, Mayor, for the, um, City Manager. If it's deferred on what item? The one we just did?
We just passed it.
I understand.
Let me just, let me just say one thing.
Yeah.
I mean, which, which we need to ask these questions prior to a vote. All right, go ahead.
Okay, Mayor, I don't know if there was any discussion on the referral, but I want to ask you about the encumbrance. This is the last meeting of the fiscal year. And if it was deferred to the Attorney pending, um, staff's, um, research, one of the, the, the funds wouldn't be encumbered in this year's budget, it'd be rolled over to the next year, would it not?
City Manager?
They would be, they would be encumbered and they would be transferred to the next year. So it wouldn't come out of next year's budget, it would be these, this year's funds being as a carryover.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Item Thirteen, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Motion to approve a change order in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, increasing the annual amount to Calvin Giordano and Associates, Inc. for the operation, maintenance, and management of municipal facilities and grounds to a total, to a total amount not to exceed six million, seven hundred ninety-two thousand, one hundred fifty-nine point forty, which includes an owner's contingency in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Second by Commissioner Schwartz. Discussion?
Yes, Mayor, yes, Mayor. My, I just want to clarify, clarify this, that in fact, this one hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars that we are asking for is a one-time claim, uh, a request, a one-time request to cover, uh, issues that we had, um, going back to a contract that we had for some work to be done at one of our, uh, actually at two of our school locations, where we had ended up in a legal, uh, situation with the company that had been awarded the contract. And so because of that, we had to come in and, um, take over, I guess, if you want to say that, uh, and use our own staff in order to get, um, to get the construction completed. It was part of the way done, but it was not completed and needed to be completed at the schools. So I just want to clarify that this one hundred and eighty-five is not, uh, not a reoccurring. It's a one-time to cover these costs that are directly related to the issue that we had, um, at the academic val, academic village and central campus and the, uh, west campus, uh, uh, location as well.
Any further discussion?
Oh, I want an answer.
Mr. Mayor, the answer, the answer is yes.
I'm sorry?
The answer is yes.
The answer is yes, it's one time. So, so this one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars is not added to the annual contract, recurring con, contract with Calvin Giordano?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz, question?
I just want to thank CGA for, uh, helping us out on this.
Okay, further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Good?
Um, and Vice Mayor, once again, thank you for getting a clarification on the record here. So let's, uh, let, let me expand that just a little bit more. So it's a one-time cost, one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. So this contract, um, when does it expire?
What's the date?
Mr. Manager, when is the contract expired?
I'm asking Steve to give me the date, I don't have that in front of me.
Mr. Buckland?
Uh, the contract expires, uh, the current contract expires October thirty-first. Of what year? Of, of twenty twenty-three.
So how many, how many days is that between now and then?
Forty-five days.
Forty days?
About.
Okay, great. So we are, we are doing a one hundred eighty-five thousand dollar request, but we are still including the contingency of two hundred thousand dollars. So I don't understand why we're adding a one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars when we have a two hundred thousand dollar contingency. If we paid a one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, that still leaves us fifteen thousand dollars between now and forty days, uh, for any contract, uh, overage. So can somebody explain that to me, please?
Mr. Buckland?
The, the contract price, um, allows for a certain amount of, of overtime during a year. Um, but it's not always accurate as far as, because you never know what overtime you're gonna need. We've already, uh, we will have already used that two hundred thousand dollars in overtime.
So are you saying that the information that was provided to us is not accurate?
No, sir.
Because the, uh, the information, I'm just reading direct from staff report, Mr. Manager. And it says, uh, and if you look at the item number six in the staff report, request commissioned to approve a change order in a, in the amount of one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, increasing the annual amount to CGA for the operation, maintenance, and management of municipal facilities and grounds to a total amount not to exceed six point seven nine two million dollars, which includes an owner contingency in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. So why are we carrying that two hundred thousand dollars? Why are we paying a one hundred eighty-five thousand, carrying two hundred thousand dollars when you already have an owner's contingency to cover this?
Mr.?
City Manager?
Uh, Commissioner, uh, what that verbiage means is, if you'll notice that the original amount, uh, the original amount included the two hundred thousand. What we're doing right now is just restating what the new amount is with the one hundred eighty-five, but it also included within there the two hundred thousand. What, uh, Mr. Buckland is saying, he's not, he doesn't have the accurate figures tonight of that two hundred thousand dollar contingency, how much overtime we've used during the whole course of that contract year? We certainly can get you that money, but it's not like evidently, if the two hundred thousand was left over, and I did ask that question, why didn't we just use that against the one eighty-five that wasn't available?
So why was that not included in the backup documentation to us? Because I'm certainly, anybody who can read this can clearly see that we have two hundred thousand dollars still available to us. And so are we being, uh, appropriately provided information or is this being?
I think it's the terminology on any contract, Commissioner.
I, I can't.
We, we always state, there's a contract price which includes an owner's contingency, and we state what it is. Could it have been better reflected? Yes, and we'll take that into consideration.
So why is it in forty? And, Mr. Manager, I'm sorry, I just, I'm really having a hard time with this one because it's really, you know, we're, we're constantly talking about money and budgets and availability and funds and things. And so you're saying that within the next forty days, we anticipate on eating up two hundred thousand dollars? And we are, why is that?
No, sir, we are not. All we're saying is, in the total budget of the six point something million dollars, that two hundred dollars is in that dollar amount.
Well, okay, so.
It's not that amount plus two hundred thousand.
So I, um, so I'll go back. I, and, and by the way, I, I, and, and I did the math based on the information that was provided to us. And, uh, we did have, um, six point four million dollar contract. And then there was a two hundred thousand dollar owner contingency added to that. So that made it, what, six point six-ish? Right?
Mm-hmm.
So we're asking now for one hundred eighty-five thousand dollars, which is gonna make it a total of six point seven nine two-ish.
Correct.
And in this statement, it says, which includes an owner contingency in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars, which means that there's still a two hundred thousand dollar contingency available. Why are we carrying that forward? I just don't understand that.
City Manager, what you're saying?
Commissioner, if I may, what you're saying is correct. However, the six point seven includes the two hundred thousand dollar contingency. Just as you did the math and added it up, those numbers totaled six, seven, nine, two, which included the two hundred thousand dollar contingency. But that two hundred thousand dollar contingency is the total amount. We do not have that number, but we certainly can provide to you what it is. But it's not an additional two hundred thousand. And it doesn't mean that we're going to spend another two hundred thousand dollars in forty-five days. Uh, it, it's done by one twelve.
So I'm gonna read again to the record what's been provided us to as information. So it was, the agreement is six point four million dollars. In addition, there is a two hundred thousand owner contingency to cover additional overtime, with emphasis, if needed. But it never spoke to that two hundred thousand dollars being consumed. And so in parent, line six, it again references, which includes an owner contingency in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. Owner contingency is available funding for any unexpected, uh, concern, if needed. So I, I'm really having a hard time. And again, I'd like to probably defer this so you go, y'all can have an opportunity to better explain to us. Is this really, at the end of the year, are we spending six point seven million? Are we spending 6.5 million change? And we're holding a $200,000 contingency? Because to me, the way I read it, we already have the money.
Commissioner, if in fact that were the case, then that money would revert back to the fund balance, so.
So why ask us?
Because at the time, because at the time it wasn't available, we can actually do the math and give you a reconciliation of it, but we won't know what that final number is till September 30th because we're still paying on this particular contract.
So you expect that in forty days, there'll be more than $15,000 that would be available in contingency to pay for overages?
I can't answer that because I'm saying of the $200,000, I don't know if Lisa's still here, how much of that has already been allocated in the original grant for overtime during the course of those 10, 11 months?
And great, you just said exactly what I'm trying to ask. So how much of that money was already spent? And how come it was not provided to us?
If I may, sir?
Go ahead.
So the way that this contract is paid out over the year is we take the original contract amount, which is $6,407,000, and we divide that by 12. And CGA bills us every month. And at the end of the year, and during the course of the year, we keep track of all the overtime and extra expenses that happen. And at the end of the year, we do a true-up. And at that time, that's when we decide, do we need to use some of the contingency? Or are we going to actually get a refund? It's like last year, we actually got a refund. We didn't quite use the 6.4 million. So in the year before that, I believe we got an even larger refund. This year, we've had a tremendous amount of overtime. We've went through the numbers. We looked to see where we're at with the true-up. We're going to consume the entire $200,000 in contingency plus an additional $185,000.
Well, I'm glad you referenced the fact that we get billed monthly. So I would expect that we have financial data monthly, such that if this was brought before us today, we know exactly where we are at today, monthly, based on a monthly billing.
That's correct, Commissioner, and that can be provided.
So again, I defer this and allow staff an opportunity to work this out a little bit more. So my motion is defer this item again.
There's a second? Second? Second motion fails for a motion, for a motion. All right, item thirteen, further discussion?
May I have a question?
That.
What, we have a motion in front of us. Is that what?
Correct, and then they wanted to defer.
And they wanted to defer.
Yeah, but it didn't. City clerk, call a roll, please, on the motion.
For the record, Mayor, the motion on the floor is a motion to approve.
Correct.
Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
No.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Buckland. Commissioner Castillo, 14A.
This is a motion to approve the department recommendations for the following items listed on the contract's database report. A is West Pines United Football Club, Inc., facility use agreement renewal.
Okay.
Mr. Manager, can I have the Parks Department, please?
Yes, Christina.
While she's coming down, let me get a second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schwartz, okay. Keep the record clear.
Christina Sorensen, Assistant City Manager?
First of all, I want to apologize for not sending you this earlier. I didn't realize what it was until I reread it this morning. And I did have a question and have a chance to get to you.
It's okay, I'm ready.
I like to ask these questions in advance so it's there for ready. Okay. 7.4 of the contract, which is on page eight of 22, says the following. On the last paragraph, I'm going to focus on, that the licensee is also required to provide the number and demographics of children, adults served, number of volunteers, fiscal conditions of the licensee, including all revenues, blah, blah, the name, address, phone number, zip code, et cetera, of participants. You're familiar with the clause? So we had a long and extended conversation about our discomfort with the sensitive information involving children becoming public records. How will your department enforce this clause?
So if you see in there, we've eliminated the children's names. And now we are requiring them, when they send us their rosters, we are asking them to refer to the children as Player One, Player Two, no names provided to us at any time.
So I just want to make sure that we're clear because in the copy that I was provided.
Okay.
7.4 says, and I'll read the whole sentence because it's relevant now, the scope of such audit is required, well, that's not the sentence. Yes, licensee is also required to provide the numbers and demographics of children and adults served. They don't serve adults, but I understand.
Thanks.
The number of volunteers and financial condition of the licensee, including all revenues and expenditures, and an electronic listing of all participants identifying by name, address, phone number, zip code, and emergency contact information. Further, licensee will be responsible for supplementing the list of participants upon any change to the registration list. So name is included. And my question to you is, how will you enforce this provision without creating a public record that could be used to endanger the children?
Mr. Sorensen?
So you said, I'm sorry, Commissioner, I didn't bring that contract up with me. You said that from 7.4 because there is a clause in there where I specifically think. When I'm looking at 7.4, it doesn't say that same thing. I was confused on what you were saying.
It says 7.4 and all line. That's page eight of 22.
This is the one that was on the desk.
Okay. Christina, that's the amended agreement, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, Commissioner, we did, and this was in all of the agreements, and it was at the request of this commission the last time we brought this up and discussed it here, was specifically to remove the reference to children's names. And we even went as far as saying, do not send us children's names. Refer to them as Player One, Player Two. We just want addresses so that we can verify their residency. And I've had conversations with every single club, and I've told them, do not send me anything with a child's name on it. And they're all aware, and we're even doing some, but they say, well, my registration has the child's name. I said, figure it out. Put a white piece of paper on top of it, make a photocopy, and then send it to me that way.
I'm very satisfied, thank you.
Yeah, we worked hard on that, so.
I'm very satisfied, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay. Further discussion? All right, call a roll on item 14A, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passed.
All right, we're at addendum one, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Item addendum number one is a motion to approve the second addendum. That's the 2023-2024 wage increases between the City Pembroke Pines and the Broward Teachers Union, better known as the BTU, the backup of which is in the addendum backup. Thank you.
Move by Commissioner Schwartz. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice mayor. Is discussion? Call a roll, please, on addendum one.
Mayor, may I have a second?
I'm sorry?
Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
Mr. Schwartz.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Madam Clerk, I was the maker of the motion. The vice mayor seconded, but I'm still a yes.
Okay.
For your record, thank you.
Thank you.
Nope, I have to vote.
Mayor?
I would like to vote on this.
I apologize. Mayor Ordus?
Congratulations to the teachers. I vote yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, let's go to item 22, city.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, item 22 is a motion to pass proposed ordinance number 2023-06 on second and final reading with a public hearing in these chambers. Proposed ordinance number 2023-06 is an ordinance of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 50 of the City Code of Ordinances entitled Water and Sewer Regulations. Amending section 50.40 entitled Cross Connection Control Program, granting City Utilities Director discretion to assume responsibility of certain maintenance requirements related to the required backflow prevention assemblies and to pass along the cost of that responsibility to certain customers. Modifying the requirement for certain customers to create and maintain records to backflow prevention assemblies, authorizing Utilities Director to require additional testing and inspections, deleting requirement that such inspections be certified and administered by certain individuals, amending the requirement for certain customers to provide notice and records of testing, deleting certain provisions requiring backflow administration fees, providing for codification, providing for conflict severability, and providing for effective date. Item number 22 on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor. You can.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
The move, Mr. Mayor.
Move by Commissioner Good. Is there a second?
Second.
By the vice mayor, discussion?
Public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry?
Public hearing for the record.
Public, would you like to speak on this item? Anybody here now? Close the public hearing. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes, motion passed.
And for the record, Mayor and Commissioner, the permit number is number 2008.
Thank you, item 23, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Commission, 23, for considerations, a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 2023-12 on second and final reading. It is proposed ordinance number 2023-12. It is an ordinance of the City Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending chapter 50 of the City's Code of Ordinances entitled Water and Sewer Regulations by specifically amending section 50.10 of the City Code entitled City Commission Approval for Connection to a City Utility, establishing a policy that the city will not provide water or sewer services to any property outside of the city's municipal boundaries when the city commission has determined that the proposed use on such property is contrary to the best interests of the city or adverse to the health, safety, and welfare of the city's residents, providing for severability, providing for conflict severability, codification, and providing for effective date. Item 23 on the floor.
Move by Commissioner Castillo, second by the vice mayor, discussion? Call a roll, please.
Public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
A public hearing, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody in the public like to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing. Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes, motion passed.
And for the record, Mayor and Commissioner, the permanent number for those who need to know this is number 2009 for item number 23.
All right, item 14, please.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
I'm sorry, twenty-four.
Close. Twenty-four. It is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2023-R-37, which is a proposed resolution 2023-R-37, which is a resolution of the City Commission of City Pembroke Pines, Florida, adopting the City Pembroke Pines Economic Development Strategy Plan update, a copy of which is attached here too as exhibit A, and incorporated herein by reference, directing the appropriate city officials to take any and all action necessary to effectuate the intent of the resolution, providing for conflict severability, providing for effective date. Item number 24 on the floor.
So moved. Move by Commissioner Schwartz, is there a second? Second by the vice mayor, discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Castillo?
Thank you. When this item was deferred, I believe, because we said that we wanted to have a town hall meeting. And I recall, Mayor, you saying that you thought it was a good idea. And I thought we were going to have the town hall meeting before we saw it again. But staff was confused about what it is that our intent was. But I felt it was pretty clear that we asked for a town hall meeting. See, because if we pass it now, and then we have a town hall meeting, I think residents will say, why are you asking us? You already passed it. So I still think that when the city passes strategic plans, it should go to the residents and present them. And then we should approve them. And if they have some suggestions, as they very often do, we should debate and discuss them. But everything should be a draft until the people say, I'm ready to go. So what is the will of the commission on this? Because time is not of the essence in passing this item. And we said that we were going to hold a town hall meeting. So I think it's a good idea to hold a town hall meeting. I like when we ask residents what they think. So.
City attorney, what's your explanation?
Mayor, all I can say and respond, Mayor, I know that the city's professional staff provided a lengthy response in connection with the issue and the chronology, setting forth what they believe to be the analysis of what was said on the record. The ultimate decider is of how this item is to be handled is, of course, the mayor and commission's decision and discretion to make. The commission certainly has a point of view that has merit in the context of his belief. But the commission has the ability to make the decision this evening, given the fact it's on the floor for consideration.
City manager? Comment?
No, Mayor.
So, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to defer until after we have a town hall.
Commissioner Schwartz, go ahead.
Mr. Stam?
Mike Stam is the city manager.
Good evening, sir.
Hello, sir.
Commissioner Castillo asked you to defer, delay, or have a town hall before this was placed on the agenda?
Let me clarify for the record.
Just answer my question, please. I'm asking if the commissioner reached out to you prior to tonight?
The commissioner did ask a question as to why it was not deferred because he thought it was part of the motion as part of the deferral.
Okay, I just want to make sure that the public comments are consistent with what happens as we're planning on trying to get to the agenda. Mr. Stam, you went through, you and your staff went through, and you took some edits out of the plan because there was a concern about certain projects that were in the permitting or in the process of being reviewed. And you took a crayon, and you took a line, and you went through it, and you erased them, right?
That's correct. We took out the Southwest, excuse me, the Townhouse project that was referred during the meeting.
Okay. Now, this is a living, breathing document, just like our green plan, correct?
That is correct.
Did we go out and do a town hall for the green plan?
We did not have a town hall for the green plan.
Did we go out and do a town hall the last time we approved a document like this?
We did not have a town hall for the last economic development plan.
Okay, and you were the director at the time, yes?
Yes, sir.
How about the time before that?
Uh, that was our first plan.
It was the first plan, because you and I worked on that?
Correct.
So, that's, that's the reason why I know that. And this was delayed because of COVID, right?
This was delayed.
Okay, now, um, how did, um, how did the consultant come up with, uh, some of the suggestions?
Um, the consultant did interviews with the elected officials. Uh, remember, this project started about a year ago, so...
With, reviewing the consultant's notes, was there any reference to going out and having a town hall prior to this document coming forward?
We did not have a town hall in the scope. We asked the consultant to reach out. It was not.
That's not what I asked. Did any elected official ask for a town hall prior to it coming forward?
I don't have the answer to that.
He wouldn't, the consultant would have those notes?
Uh, potentially. I, I mean, I glanced at the consultant's notes, 'cause some of the notes are included in the plan, but I don't know if a town hall was specifically introduced in any one of those documents.
But certainly, if it was, we would've done that.
Well, we would've run into the scope.
Absolutely. Thank you. That's all, Mayor.
Okay, further discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Good?
Yeah, can I speak?
Oh, oh, wait, oh, wait.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, yeah, I, uh, I too was of the impression that we would probably get a little bit more input. I, you know, there was a lot of work that went into this. It's a very important document, right? Is that correct, Mr. Stam?
That is correct.
So, you use this sort of as a guidance, uh, with your department and the city as we go forward, is that correct?
That is correct. Okay.
And so, it's, uh, very relevant to the city. Um, you know, and, you know, if we've not done that in the past, then, you know, I think maybe we should be doing it more often in, in terms of, you know, I know that you have public input, and I know that your consultant, you know, acquires all this data, puts a product before us and says, "This is what we think we're hearing." So, it's great to at least put it before the public to let them see what that product is before we actually codify it or, and move it forward and make it, uh, a real, live, living document. So, I don't, I don't see anything wrong with us waiting until we have a, uh, a town hall meeting. I, I honestly think that's pretty good transparent governance with, uh, regards to things that are gonna impact our city. So, um, you know, I, I do think that it's a, a great idea for us to be putting this before the public before we do make a final decision.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Go ahead.
Um, Commissioners, this year, uh, twenty-twenty-three, the city would have adopted the green plan earlier this year, the transportation master plan in June, the economic development plan either tonight or at a future date. The Parks and Rec Department will be bringing their Parks and Rec Master Plan, and then we'll also have a public art plan. So, in the year twenty-twenty-three, we should've had, or we should have, five master planning documents. When this item came up, before I received an email from the commissioner, the manager had reached out to me. He says, "Mike, what is your plan for a town hall?" Knowing that it was gonna come up tonight, but again, when we reviewed the minutes, when I reviewed my notes, the motion was really only on the lines to defer. My recommendation to the manager at that time, before I received the email from the commissioner asking where the town hall was, it's his understanding of the item, my recommendation was that we hold one town hall meeting where we discuss our future, our future where we talk about all of our master planning documents, the transportation plan, the green plan. My personal belief is that while all of these documents are important, they all appeal to different people. My plan initially before any of this was to have a joint advisory board meeting with all of our workshop, with all of our boards, because they touch and work on these documents. So, my plan and my recommendation to the manager early on was to, to do exactly what you're asking, but because these are living, breathing documents and we have the ability to modify them, my plan was to present all these documents to the boards, to the commissions, to the public, to the, our advisory boards, create a survey document so that they could participate. This one document is over three hundred pages. The transportation plan, over three hundred pages. The green plan's a little bit shorter. I haven't seen the final drafts of the other two plans yet, but in my opinion, and my recommendation to the manager, was that we should be talking about our future collectively. We create a page on our website where we show all these plans with descriptions of the plans and what went into the plans, and then we present these to not only our advisory boards, but to the community as a whole. My personal belief is that when we did some of the outreach of some of these items, we have been finding more and more activity through our YouTube channel, and that's one of the things that we found success with our transportation plan. So, we, my, my recommendation would be to record the meeting, post it on our YouTube channel, put a QR code, which will link them to a survey document, and also to where all these plans are housed. I think different people will participate different ways. When you look at this particular plan, this particular plan, more than half of the items, the goals and strategies are staff-driven. The other goals and strategies are conceptual, and they're actually continuation of what we've already done. So, for example, uh, goal number five was to implement items of our transportation plan. Um, and goal number six, we talk about redevelopment of the city, or goal number four, excuse me, we talk about redevelopment of the city, and what it's, what it is, is actually what we've been doing. This city hall property was an assemblage. City Center was an assemblage. The recommendation from the commit, from the consultant was to continue that, but to look at certain sites, and those recommendations were in there. So, my, my point with these comments is that I believe that it'd be best served, and we'd probably get the, we'd be able to cast the widest net with our residents, with our advisory boards, with the public at large, if we discuss all of these and we educate all of them when it comes to these documents. And that's just my recommendation. I expressed that recommendation to the city manager prior to receiving the email, Commissioner Castillo. I apologize if I misconstrued the motion. I went back and, after I got your email, and I went back and I listened to the audio, um, your item, you discussed the, 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 the town hall during the presentation item, and I apologize again. That's why I went back after I got your email, because we, I had been working on a different direction, thinking that the town hall was gonna happen. I didn't think it would impact the adoption of the document.
Mayor?
Yeah, Commissioner.
That's an interesting, that's an interesting construct. If we're gonna follow that construct, we can't approve the plans before we have the meeting, because then the public will say, "Why are you asking me? You've already approved the plan." So, maybe we need to hold that off for the next, and, 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 and I'm interested in how that would be done and how time management would allow six plans, five plans, uh, to be presented, uh, in that particular way. However, on this plan, I know that there's a lot of folks who have an interest in the economic development future of the city, and I think it's appropriate to ask them. That's why I brought it up. That's why the mayor said he, he thought it was a great idea. Let's do that. Um, if that didn't get onto the audio, I don't know, I don't know, because I, I heard it, Commissioner Good heard it. It, you didn't hear it. Maybe, maybe it didn't make it to the audio somehow. However, I, I'd like to make a motion to defer this item so that we can make, so that we can meet with the public, and after we get public comment, we can pass it. I think it's a good plan. I think it's worthy of presentation to the residents, and I hope they, they, they like it too. And I hope that they have possibly suggestions for how to improve it, because ultimately, it's their city, and this will be their plan, uh, uh, that staff present for their approval. And so, I, I'd like to make a motion to defer until after we have the town hall meeting that we agreed to have.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Good. Discussion?
Quickly, Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
Uh, Ms. Sorenson on the spot, uh, I'd like to find out when that's coming down the river.
Okay.
'Cause it seems like to me that we're gonna be doing this probably Q-two, twenty-twenty-four, as far as this town hall goes.
I actually just looked at the final draft, getting ready to send to the manager, so my plan was to bring it at the October eighteenth meeting for presentation.
Then we have the holidays. You can't ask people to do that. We have, we have, um, we have Raising Positive Children and some really good things already scheduled.
Right.
I think we're doing that again in February, so it looks like the beginning of Q-two is when we're gonna bring this thing. So, we're gonna, if, if we're, if we're going to have, conceptually, all these coming forward, right? You wanna get, uh, the great hall, you wanna get participation, you wanna get excitement, and it's gonna take some planning. So, we're gonna need, we're gonna need the, the great hall to do this. Can't do it in here. There's no way that's gonna work.
All right. So, let me just make a comment if I could. I, I'm always open for a town hall meeting to hear what the residents want to say, but we, we send these out two weeks in advance, and we put it on our, online, and I hadn't had one resident call me about this. I haven't had one resident, so I would think they'd be satisfied with the item that is presented. I just, uh, wanted to make that.
Mr. Mayor, on the items?
Vice Mayor, Jim. Oh, Commissioner Good?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just...
We're still on deferral.
And the question is on a deferral, in terms of, what, what is the urgency to have this approved by this commission?
City Manager?
I'll defer to Mike.
Mr. Mike?
Um, I wanna close out the contract. We, we're already beyond the timeline of the contract. Any edits would then be done by myself. Um, we were supposed to procure it. Uh, we're trying to finish up the contract. The, like, again, we went through a series of public participation on this document. We got public feedback, similar to what we did on the transportation plan and the other plans that we've done. Um, again, we thought we punched all the tickets. Um, it, it's, it's more of a matter of, of closing out the documents and getting to work. I mean, to be perfectly honest with you, half the items in there are, like I said, more than half are staff-driven items. How the staff approaches economic development, building a new economic development webpage, those types of things.
Okay, further discussion? Call or roll, please.
What is the voting on?
On the motion to deferral.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz? Vice Mayor Seifel?
Yes.
Mayor Orde?
No. All right, motion passes. We have it for roll. Thank you all.
City Manager?
Go ahead, Commissioner Schwartz.
City Manager, it, it sounds like we have, um, you know, um, I like the plan. I wanna pass it, but we try to work as squalidial as we can, and now we're waiting on the Masters Parks Plan, and then we can start scheduling the town hall.
Well, Commissioner, if I could, I, I, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
May I interject for a moment? So, again, my idea was to hold one town hall for all these items.
Right.
I, my, my preference would be to get some direction from the commission so that it's completely obvious as to how we're gonna move forward. Is, are we gonna schedule a town hall just for this economic development plan?
Well, let me interrupt you. Why can't we have a town hall meeting for all the items? City Manager?
That's up to the commission to decide. I know Mike and I have discussed it. Uh, I agreed with him. I thought it was a good idea to bring them all together.
I think it's a good idea.
So, two of the four, two of the five plans have already been approved, um, that we were gonna propose to be part of this. So, hence the reason why we came forward in this fashion. So, that's, so, if, at the schedule that I've received from the Parks and Rec Department, we're probably not looking till the first quarter, end of January, to have all of these items presented. That's why I was seeking clarification. Mayor, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I just wanna make sure that it's abundantly clear how we're gonna move forward.
If I may, and to City Manager, uh, Mr. Stam mentioned the closing out contract. I know we extended, um, the contract for the, um, redistricting. The, uh, that whole process took a few more weeks, or however that was, uh, and Mr. Stam had to deal with that as well. Uh, Mr. Stam, the contract, uh, when do you anticipate it being closed out? That, that wouldn't create, uh, a burden on your staff? Uh, Ms. Sorenson had mentioned that, uh, parks may, may show up in October, November. Is that too late for you?
Well, Mayor, if I may, um, it, it's not a matter of being too late. Um, I'll be perfectly honest with you. My only concern is that if the public comes out and I have to do a substantial rewrite, and I don't have them on board, and I don't have the funds as part of the contract to do some sort of substantial rewrite. That's why we put the public participation, the interviews, all of that stuff up front, um, as part of this process. You know, my idea with the town hall, when I heard the town hall, was really to introduce the plans, um, to, to put them out to the public. Um, again, I understand the direction that the commission wants to take. I, I, I'm, I'm understanding of that. I just don't know to what level a rewrite would occur, um, or if I'd have to reengage them. Um, it's not something I put in my budget for, for this year.
Okay. So, um, Mayor, just got a quick comment to Mr. Dodge. Um, Mr. Dodge, thank you for providing me the, the budget cuts that were taken off the table. I think it was eight point six million dollars. Some of it actually incorporated some of the stuff that Parks and Recreation would have liked to have done, which is now gonna be a part of the Masters Plan that I anticipate coming up for future funding. And just like the economic development plan, this isn't so much financial, but more conceptual, as far as what direction that the city wants to go and, and, uh, and the like. So, the two plans for the record that have already been passed without public, uh, town halls were what, Mr. Stam?
The, the green plan was adopted in April by resolution, and the transportation plan was adopted in June by resolution.
Okay, moving people and saving trees was, was done without a town hall. Thank you, sir.
All right. Uh, Ports and League Representatives, I had a conference call today with the Florida League of Mayors, uh, and we have another one tomorrow and Friday, the Florida League of Cities preparing for the legislature coming up in January, and it's not any better than it was. So, we have a lot, a lot of work to do.
I have, Mayor, I have a, um, a phone in for the committee that I'm on, the Municipal Administration Committee that I'm on with the Florida League, again, to start talking about the issues and how we are going to strategically plan to, uh, get to, uh, Tallahassee this year for some of the really bad issues that are, that are floating around out there. So, we, we are, we are strategically meeting and, and, uh, from all over the state and talking about those issues. So, that's Friday.
Okay. Uh, Ports and Manager?
No items, Mayor.
City Attorney?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Castillo, item twenty-five.
Thank you. This is a motion to discuss and take possible action to approve a request by Hispanic Vote of Broward County, a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization devoted to encouraging all registered voters in Broward County to vote, uh, to hold their September meeting in honor and special honor of Hispanic Heritage Month in the lobby of Pembroke Pine City Center, waiving any rental costs at no cost to the organization, providing pay refreshment concessions that they would pay for themselves. Uh, that wasn't included in the item, but they, they will pay for any concession they consume, provided at, at no cost to attendees. That, what that meant was that there's no entry fee to attend the meeting, but if they have a refreshment, they will pay. On October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, from six PM to eight-thirty PM, colleagues, uh, I was approached by, uh, uh, Hispanic Vote, which has held, uh, these meetings in other city halls, Dania, Hollywood, Marimar, others, and, uh, they've never been to Pembroke Pines before, and they honor us, uh, with this request, uh, just a little bit after, but during the same month as Hispanic Heritage Month, and, uh, staff, uh, has assured me that the lobby of City Hall is not being used that day. So, uh, it works all the way around, and, uh, I think it would be a wonderful thing. You are all invited, obviously, and you would get those invitations, and you, you get them regularly, and I hope that, uh, we can extend that to them.
Mr. Mayor, second?
Is it seconded the motion?
We made a motion.
Second. Did you second it?
I second it.
I heard, hold on, hold on.
Commissioner Good, seconded.
Okay. Folks, let's just, can we do this, really? So, it's good, and we wanna go just directly. Call your name if you wanna second it, because when you just yell, uh, okay, let's go, please. Oh, Commissioner Good, seconded the motion.
Yes.
I just wanna run this the right way. Okay.
I have a...
Discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm gonna wait for you to recognize me, I'm sorry. Um, I, I, I think this is really a great idea. Um, you know, we've talked many times about using our, our city hall for, you know, for residents, you know, for residents to be able to come in and to be able to use, I mean, it's their city hall, and to be able to, to use it. What I would like to make sure, though, that, that, that what happens is that, um, that clearly, as it was stated, you know, stated in here, that it's nonpartisan, it's not political, it's not any of that stuff that's being, being used, or which we can't have that happening, obviously. Um, and that, that the, that the, um, what I read in here was encouraging registered voters, you know, to come out and vote and, and all that, which is, which is fabulous. That's great. Um, and I would suggest that the group, and I, I think they probably have in the past, but again, would continue to work with the Supervisor Elections Office to coordinate, uh, voter registration and voter and, and education and information about dates and what has changed, and, and particularly, uh, what a lot of folks are still not, not knowledgeable of is that the, uh, the mail-in ballots that you thought you requested, you know, years ago when you were gonna get it forever, that's all been erased and, and deleted. You now have to, each individual now has to go online and re-request that they get those, um, that they get those, um, the mail-in ballots to them. So, that's a really big, important issue, 'cause a lot of folks do rely upon that, and they're gonna be sitting there thinking they're gonna get something in the mail, and they're not gonna if they have not, uh, done their, their re-sign up. I guess it's, that's, reregistering, I guess, is really what it's called. Um, the other, the other thing, um, uh, that I wanted to make sure of, and, and again, I, I, I think this is really, you know, a great, a great use of, of our, of our lobby area, um, is that, that this same opportunity, tonight we had Mr. Ram Tawari was here, and he's been here on several different occasions, representing different, um, different groups, different, uh, uh, groups out in our community. Tonight, he happened to be here for, uh, for the Hindu group. So, my question would be, and I, and I'm not sure City Manager if this would be your answer or whose answer this would be, that, that, um, while I'm in favor of this, I just would like to make sure that this same opportunity would be offered under the same terms to any other group that would want to be able to come in and utilize, um, you know, utilize the space in the same, in the same, um, fashion. Um, you know, to be, again, working with, uh, trying, you know, to registering and, and that, and that kind of stuff. Um, so, and I also thought that this talking about this and, and the use of, of the facility, what have you, might be a really good item to be on our, on the agenda for our Heritage and Diversity Committee to talk about this, because tonight we just happen to have examples of two, two different groups, but there are hundreds of groups in our city. We are so very, very diverse in our city, and, uh, to be able to make sure that we're offering equal opportunity out there for everyone, I think, would have to be very, very important. So, um, I, I would certainly, I would certainly support this, but I would certainly want to make sure that in supporting this, the issues that I brought up are, are, um, incorporated in this. Uh, and so, City Manager, that would be my question to you, is how would we, how would we then deal with making sure that, um, you know, any group that came before us would be able to, uh, take, take, you know, take advantage of these same, um, same opportunities?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Commission, I think it can be done in two ways. It can be done in the process by which the commission had presented this evening on a particular group that, uh, made a request, or the commission could establish a policy, uh, regarding, uh, this type of issue. So, it could be either way, however you all prefer.
Well, I, I, I would, Mayor, if I could, and based upon what City Manager just said, um, I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, request City Attorney to come back to us with a, with a...
You're making an amendment?
I, I guess I'm making an amendment, yeah.
Or is this just separate?
Or a sep, no, really a separate one. I'd like to make it a separate one.
You're gonna make a substitute motion.
Well, I don't wanna, I'll make it after we vote on this one, then.
Okay.
Let's do that. I'll wait, I'll do it afterwards.
Mayor? Let me just, I wanna make a point. Uh, I think it's a great item, uh, but I would like to see us, if we could, to have an organization look at it, maybe sponsor it. I mean, every time we have an, an event, we always have somebody, and I'll bet, there'll be a lot of people jumping to sponsor this. So, just, just a suggestion. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Ms. Sorenson.
Look cold in here.
Okay. Ms. Sorenson, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening again. Um, so, you, one of your responsibilities is overseeing events inside this building?
Yes.
Whether it be elephants or gun shows?
Unfortunately.
Um, and certainly, uh, I'm looking forward to Vice Mayor Cykel's, uh, motion under New Business, uh, to get a policy established. Uh, Children's Harbor, they help kids, right?
Yes.
Um, when they, uh, when they ask to have the event, do they submit an application? Is there an application process?
It's not exactly an application, it's a request for information. They tell us, we want so many tables, we want lights, we want dancing, we want a stage, we want a dance floor, and then we talk to them about what their request, and from there we come up with a proposal and what that's going to cost them.
So, uh, so a member from the organization would reach out to you and, and handle that, correct? An agent for the organization?
Yes, yes.
Um, Fathers MIA, another great organization helping young girls who are fatherless, they've done the same, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Um, how did this request come in?
Um, this request came through Commissioner Castillo.
Is there anyone here from Hispanic Vote tonight?
I invited them, Commissioner, they could not make it tonight.
Okay. Um, Mr. Garcia is a good friend, our boys played baseball together, um, and as a matter of fact, uh, I mean, for, for full disclosure, um, uh, it's an organization that endorses, and so it is, while it's nonpartisan, it is an organization that is involved politically. Um, and, uh, one of the things that I, I think residents want to know is, one, um, the costs, the physical cost of the event, if it's being waived, there's, there must be a cost for, uh, for hosting the event. Um, number two, uh, is there, do you think there's any way that we can get Supervisor of Elections to come out to facilitate, um, uh, voter registration and voter education? Because I, because I haven't seen...
Point of clarification, Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Castillo.
Uh, I attend many of their meetings, and Supervisor of Elections is personally there just about all of them. And when he's not, his staff is there with all kinds of information. Uh, Hispanic Vote insists on it, and they have a very close relationship with Supervisor of Elections.
Okay. So this is important, this is important that, that, that the Supervisor of Elections Office attends this meeting, whether it's the Supervisor, Mr. Scott, or a member of his staff, because as the City Attorney will advise us, state law's changed.
But he's going to attend.
State law's changed. All I'm asking for, okay, uh, is that, um, we, we have everything set up so that people can fill out their forms, they can do their absentee ballots...
Supervisor of Elections will do that.
Okay, because, uh, the, the nonprofits now are now limited under state law as far as how they're able to handle this stuff. My last question is, how will this be promoted? The public needs to know about it. So what steps are we going to take, um, first as a city, um, to, to promote the event?
Point of clarification, Mayor?
Hold on, Ms. Oronton, you want to answer the question?
Well, waiting for this item to be approved, and then we would discuss with the group on how that works.
Commissioner Castillo? Uh, they just want us to allow them to have the meeting here. They will advertise their own meeting.
Okay. Commissioner Good?
No, I support the item, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Uh, point of clarification, is the Commissioner suggesting that we don't advertise the event? We should have Hispanic Vote just do it on their own?
No, I don't think he said that.
I don't, I don't think that's what he meant. Uh, what I'm saying is, if the city, if, if we're going to approve this, then, then we need to get the word out and promote that...
I think we've got it in hand.
We got that handled?
I think we got it.
Thank you.
Okay, City Clerk, call a roll, please.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cykel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Listen, pass it.
Okay, item twenty-six, Commissioner Schwartz?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I, now is the time for me to make my, my motion?
Okay.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we direct the City Attorney to, to draft language for us to review that would set, um, policy on how events like this would, would, or could occur in the future.
Seconded, seconded by Commissioner Schwartz, discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo.
So, I don't think it's a secret here, uh, that, uh, when some of the groups that Commissioner Schwartz mentioned, uh, come, come before, um, Christina, those are fundraisers, and so they need to pay rent because they're raising funds, and those, those are different. And very often, there are commissioners, uh, the mayor, others, who will bring an item, let's buy a table at a, for a nonprofit. But we don't buy a table for every nonprofit, just about every nonprofit has a gala, a fundraiser. Uh, uh, what, I think the public trust is that the commissioners come forward with an item when they feel that they want to bring the item forward. There are also occasions when a group will come before us and ask, uh, for our support. That's what happened with the, with the group with the, uh, Fathers and, uh, MIA. They came here to the podium, and they convinced us all, uh, that, uh, that we should do it. So there are different ways for us to, to handle this without it becoming a situation where, uh, there's a run on City Hall that would make it impossible, potentially, and I don't, I don't suggest that the, that, that, I know that the motion wasn't, wasn't aiming in that direction, but that would make it impossible for staff to accommodate, uh, every request. So I'm perfectly comfortable asking the manager to come back to us with what he thinks is a good policy to deal with this. Now, as you know, whenever, when any, whenever, whenever any of you have come forward with, I want to buy a table at a gala or whatever, I voted yes for it, and the reason I voted yes for it is because it's important to you individually. Frankly, I think that those are things that should be budgeted. However, uh, if, if, if what we want to do is, uh, is, uh, is create a policy around these things, I'm all for it. I, I, I think, I think that we should include both of those, not just the, the, and, and I, and I want to remind those of you who were here when, when the, uh, when the city center was being discussed, we at all times said that this was going to be the people's house where community groups could be. We've always said that. That was part of the original design of the city center. We had conference rooms for that purpose, we had, uh, the lobby and other areas for that purpose. We always said that we were going to use it in this way. It hasn't happened all the time, and I'm not saying it needs to happen every single evening, but certainly, when, um, um, it comes to our attention on the agenda, we should accommodate one another, and, and, and I'm very, very thankful. I think Hispanic Vote will be very, very thankful that we passed their item today, and I look forward to any policy that comes forward from, uh, from the manager governing the issue. I think it's a great idea.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, uh, actually, my motion was to the City Attorney to draft that, but...
Well, whatever.
And, and the per- and, and I just want to make very clear that, that I'm supporting, I had supported earlier the item that was before us, because I think it's a good idea. Um, but I just want to have language that says that there is an equal opportunity for any other group that wants to come before us...
Mm-hmm.
But with certain stipulations. They can't be a political group, they can't be an endorsement group, they can't be, uh, any other thing that would be very negative that perhaps the City Attorney can think of that I can't think of right now. Um, and, and that is, in, in, in my thinking, is a way to keep this, which I think was the intent of the original motion tonight, was to be able to allow groups to utilize our beautiful facilities here and hold their events. So I support that. My motion again was to just make sure that we have some direction and we have an ability to treat everyone equally with, with that role.
Further discussion?
No.
Further discussion? Call a roll, please, on a motion.
Commissioner Cykel?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Listen, pass it.
Item twenty-six, Commissioner Schwartz.
You're going to leave, or you're going to stay?
Commissioner Schwartz?
I'm asking.
You don't have to ask anything. None of your business, you leave.
Well, I don't want to be interrupted.
So, just...
Why don't you do my addendum?
I've, I've called you?
Follow up on the...
You know, just, just, City Attorney?
What?
City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
I'm getting a little, you know, with this, with the great commissioners, I'm going to run a commission meeting professionally. Somebody wants to leave, that's up to them. Somebody wants to interrupt, that's up to me to not have them interrupt. You agree with me, City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, you have the gavel.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz, please go ahead.
Uh, follow up on the resident...
Go ahead.
That's good. Follow up on the resident's public records request from August eighteenth and September sixth.
City Manager?
We're not voting on the item, I'm just bringing to light that it does not appear that the record is complete.
Okay. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor.
You asked me a question?
Yes.
Is it complete?
He wouldn't know.
What was the question?
I'm saying, based on the information provided, it does not appear to be complete, Mayor. I'm ready to move on to the next item.
All right. Commissioner Schwartz, on item twenty-seven.
Uh, discussion and possible action to place all City of Pembroke Pines ballot questions on the November five, twenty-twenty-four ballot to ensure the maximum amount of public participation, and request the City Attorney's Office repair resolution, language, no later than May of twenty-twenty-four for commission consideration.
Go ahead.
That's, uh, that's my motion.
You have, you want to place a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to place a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Second for Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Uh, yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. Look, um, it, it, the data is clear, that when we, uh, when we have charter, uh, questions, the last time we did this, it was in November of twenty-twelve, and this is a, this, unlike Mr. Stam's economic development plan that could be modified, this is every decade, and we need to get the most voter participation possible, and I think that we need to establish that policy, uh, uh, now for November.
Okay, further discussion?
No.
Okay?
Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner, uh, Castillo.
I, I'm neither for or against the item, I just think it's not right. I think that this can wait. Uh, the chances are very good there'll be a new city commission here in, in, in March, uh, certainly new commissioners, and, um, I don't know how many, but, um, I think that that's a decision we should allow the next seated city commission to make. I don't see the urgency in, 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 in doing it now. Um, and I don't want, and, and the way that this was worded, it really didn't talk about the charter review. Now that he's, now, now that charter review has been mentioned as part of this discussion, I can understand what it is. I, I wasn't sure which ballot questions, uh, we were particularly talking about, but there's no urgency to do this. Uh, I, I don't even know that cha- that the Charter Board will actually ramp up any changes to us. So I really just don't see the need to do this now. Uh, I think that we can revisit it after, uh, after the new year at some, at some relevant point, that we have ballot questions in front of us. It is the responsibility of every voter, uh, to vote in every election. In Florida, we have three elections cycles. We have March, we have August, and we have November, uh, barring special election. And even though the November elections, because they get so much advertising and everything else, collect the most votes, it is the responsibility of every single voter, uh, to vote in every election. That's it. That's, that's part of the deal when you're a citizen. And, uh, I just believe, I just believe that we shouldn't tie the hands of, uh, of a future city commission with, uh, with policies that don't need to be made today, so...
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I can't really support it.
No, I, no, no comment.
No comment. Discussion, further? Call a roll, please.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cykel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
No.
Commissioner Good?
No.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Listen, pass it.
All right. Addendum two, City, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor Cykel, item, addenda, addendum item, will move to direct the City Attorney to draft a resolution removing incineration from the ILA between the newly formed authority and any Broward city, as well as Broward County and the authority researching other environmentally protected, protective solid waste disposal process.
Second. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Uh, first off, I, I wanted to let you know that I attended the, the latest, uh, the recent Southwest Ranches Council meeting, and I spoke at that meeting, and I did tell them that I respected their decision to join the ILA, but I did ask them to, to consider that their continued support be contingent on the removal of any additional incinerator language from the ILA, and that instead, language should be included, asking for the studies to include new, healthier, and more environmentally safe methods of solid waste disposal. I have also reached out to, to several resident groups that have organized to actively oppose this. Any resident, and I'm asking tonight, any resident that is interested in joining any of these groups, please reach out to me at City Hall, because they are being very, very active already about this. Um, I also, and I, was shared with my, with my colleagues, I wrote a letter, um, my, for, as myself, as, as Vice Mayor Cykel, and I sent it to, had it sent to all the mayors, county commissioners, Broward County commissioners, and council people, uh, in Broward County. And I want to read the letter for the record, please. Throughout the country, cities and states are wrestling with the same issues that we in South Florida and Broward County are facing when it comes to addressing solid waste disposal. In following the proposed plan of the Broward League of Cities Solid Waste Working Group, the SWWG, to create a solid waste disposal, disposal and recyclable material processing authority, I am compelled to write to you and share my thoughts. The term waste to energy, WTE, is often used to support what potentially can be the unsafe technology of in, uh, incineration. The city of Pembroke Pines has never been in favor of incineration for a multitude of reasons, many of which involve harm to public health and the environment, and stands firmly on this position and has for decades. However, at this time, there are limited options available. Action must be taken now to find new solutions, but simply calling incineration by a new name and touting it as environmentally safe is a false solution. We all know the risks and health impacts associated with pollutants from incineration. Regardless of what is being burned, harmful chemicals and pollutants are created and released and, and are released entering the air, water, and food supply. There are many studies that support this. The reason for my letter is to let you know that I will be requesting a resolution at our next commission meeting, which I just did. In that resolution will be the request that the SWWG authority remove any and all language that involves or references incineration in their study plans, and that the focus, that the group focus on new technologies using methods that do not involve incineration, and that recycling be made part of the overall plan. We cannot burn away our garbage problem. They should also look at ways to help produce less waste. In his March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three memorandum, the vice chair of the SWWG states that Broward, in partnership with the SWWG, and as the authority is being created, would begin taking steps on a parallel track to potentially procure a new waste to energy facility to dispose of waste within Broward County. To me, that indicates an incinerator is on the table for serious consideration. The creation of additional incinerator sites as a method to be considered and studied is not acceptable now and never should be. I thank you for your time and encourage you to also, I encourage you to also stand against incineration or any other name this process goes by, and be part of a commitment that incineration is not the choice or path that is best for our future health and environment. Signed sincerely, Iris Cykel, Vice Mayor.
Good letter, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor? Further discussion? Yes, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So I had this letter sent out to, to these folks, and again, I'm not telling them, get out of the ILA, that's their choice to do that. But what I am asking all of them, again, to do is to have that language change in there, to take out the reference to incineration, and to stress and move forward more on finding new and better ways to take care of our garbage problem that are health-wise, safe, and environmentally safe. Um, and I think if we don't, there's already been a, a big surge on a lot of this, and folks, I think honestly, is, is our time to bite at it, and we need to do it, we need to do it hard, and we need to not back up on it at all because these plans that are out there are plans that will last for thirty, forty, fifty years, and you can only imagine what that will be doing to, to our environment, um, and to the health. Think of yourself, think of your children, think of your grandchildren, and think of future generations, think of the wildlife that's out there that no one seems to be even mentioning too much, uh, in any of these discussions about the harm that's going to happen, happen to them, depending upon where incinerators are placed. We don't have to have incinerators, there are other ways out there to dispose of solid waste, and we need to push this group to look at those ways and bring that back to us, not just, we're looking at parallel lines to put another incinerator somewhere.
Second.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Commissioner Castillo? Yes, thank you. I was glad to second the item, um, um, I think it's, I think it's worth doing. Uh, just yesterday, I was in Miami-Dade County on a related issue, uh, testifying against, uh, their plan to put a, uh, an incinerator, uh, near the Miramar border, and Miramar Mayor, uh, Messum did a fantastic job testifying, and what I told our colleagues in, uh, in Miami-Dade County is, is, is what I've said here before. Uh, human beings, going back to when we lived in caves, disposed of garbage primarily in two ways, they buried it or they burned it. Here we are, millions of years later, and we're still doing the same thing, except the only difference now is we know better. There are technologies that are being utilized, not just nationally, but internationally, that avoid the pitfalls, uh, to our people's health, to our land, to our water, to our air, in this case, to the Everglades, um, and we need to, we need to deal with it. We also have the purchasing power, and every county has this, to re, reuse our own plastics, metals, woods, and carboards right here, and if we just do that, what's left is much easier to handle. And I, I, I understand that there are those who want to convince other cities not to join the ILA, I, and I respect that. Um, we chose not to join the ILA, but I don't wish them failure, I wish them success. And what this resolution does is it helps point them in the direction of success, so of course I want to vote for it. Um, I want them, somebody's got to come up with an answer, because at the end of the day, when you separate out all of the good talk and all of the fine intentions, the garbage has got to go somewhere. So we need a group that can come up with an answer, and if, and I, and I can only speak for myself, down the road, if they come up with that answer, I'll take a look at whether to invest in it, in it again. What I couldn't do was vote for, um, an authority that, uh, wanted to assess us funding that didn't have a plan.
Exactly.
First you come up with the plan, it seems to be, and then you figure out how to pay for it. Okay, I'm straying from the point. The point is, Commissioner's item is very much, uh, in, in order, and I think it's a great idea. I hope that they listen to it. I hope that other cities get involved in it. Commissioner, if I, if, if I could improve your, your, your resolution, I would include sending it to every city in Broward County, encouraging them to do the same?
I did.
Okay, good. So that, so that it's in there, because I think that's good policy. Let's stop burning things. Let's find a way not to have to bury the garbage. We have the technology, let's use it, and stop the burying, and stop the burning, and get going with this thing already.
Mayor?
Further discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Commissioner Schwartz, wrap up.
Yes, speaking of technology, Madam Clerk, addendum two is not on the internet. We need to get this included, please.
Okay.
Okay?
We'll do it. All right, further discussion?
No. Mayor, and I just, I just want to clarify, this was sent to every, every city, the mayors, commissioners, council people, for that, thank you.
Sir, you want to come up? You've got three minutes. Name your name and address, please.
Speak button, gray button, just above the green?
Speak button.
I don't have a glass. Just above the yellow? There we go.
Take a yellow. You're on.
Tim Wilder, D'Angelo Estates, Pembroke Pines. First of all, I'd like to say thanks, Iris, for showing up at that meeting. I was there the other night, and I think, uh, at least for you having the guts to show up there, uh, means a lot, and a lot to a lot of people that were there. However, um, a lot of people don't understand out there that, uh, what you had mentioned in that meeting, it was going to cost Pembroke Pines six hundred thousand dollars to join this ILA. This is a problem. And to me, it seems like, uh, taxation without representation, because as Mr. Castillo said, give us a bunch of money, and then we'll give you the idea of what we're going to do. That's, I've been, been this thirty-nine years, I would never enter any kind of agreement like that, no, and I think anybody with any common sense wouldn't either.
That's right.
You know, and so, I want to ask, has anybody read the contract? Are we once signed into that? Uh, Mr. Dodge had mentioned that we have one way or one, one attempt to get out, and once you sign in, you're locked in for forty years, if that's correct?
You can get out at any time.
Okay. Now, is that fee a cap, um, where it was what, two hundred thousand dollars times three, or is that six hundred thousand dollars each year?
No, two, two hundred thousand approximately a year.
So it costs the residents of Pembroke Pines two hundred thousand dollars a year to join this tax authority, let's call it what it is?
That, that, that's an, that was an estimate, and it could be extended.
And so they could raise this, there's, is there any stipulations where there's a cap on that? Sam, any, have you seen any of that, Mr. Gordon, where there's, read that where there's a cap, or we don't even know that, right?
Please?
Uh, there, there is no specific cap.
Wow, and that's something. Taxpayers, you ought to be scared to death with this. Um, and I think some of the other cities, Weston, Davie, and some others should pay attention to this. Uh, that, that's madness. So we're going to give a bunch of people a whole bunch of money, this, we don't even know what we're getting into, other than, oh, we're the, we're the tax authority. This probably be, possibly the largest tax increase people have seen in a great, great long, uh, deal of time. So I would ask for all of you, and even the residents, to call the other cities and say, hey, slow the roll here, uh, stop this tax authority. I saw, I provided the documents, but we found out about it by, by a Southwest Ranch resident, uh, this thing's serious, and once that, once that authority gets into play, try to get it stopped. I think we need to slow down and think about this, and find professional people, not just a bunch of guys, we don't even know what are their qualifications for being on this authority. Other thing, we've been told that we're going to pay in hundreds of thousands of dollars, and trust that they're going to give us the right advice, so-
Okay.
I, I'm stressing that you guys would, would please, uh, contact the other cities and, 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 uh, ask them to bail on that tax authority, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Let me just tell you that I wrote a letter, and you know that.
Sir?
I wrote a letter to Dade County, expressing our concern and displeasure for them even thinking of an ILA. I wrote a letter to the Broward County Commission, saving this commission's pleasure in not joining an ILA. This commission, there was a crowd of people here, voted on the record as no ILA.
I was there that night.
You got that? You got that? So why are you bringing up a question that we made?
Well, I'm bringing this up because it seems to cause on, uh, some deaf ears, uh, in different cities, and, and here's a good platform to do it, since, you know what, we brought a bunch of people here to Iris's meeting, I think it might have surprised you guys, but I had a lot to do with that, and you know what, because, in my view, I think it was a done deal, the city may have voted yes that night, uh, Mr. Ordus, so you know what, and it's not a time that-
How do you know that?
Well, just my speculation.
Okay, good.
Well, so at the end of the day, that was my thought, so-
Thank you very much.
You know, and for you being rude and, and jumping out of place like this, I think it just shows your arrogance, so have a nice evening, sir.
I gave you three minutes, that's the rule, sir. City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
Uh, we, any further discussion? Call a roll, please, Madam Clerk.
No, Mayor, thank you.
Just can't win a race, man.
Vice Mayor Cykel?
Yes.
Commissioner Castillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
I'm sorry, what, what are we voting on here?
The, the great item, the great item that Vice Mayor Cykel brought forward.
What is it for?
The great item, addendum two.
Okay. Yes. Her motion?
Addendum number two, for the record.
All right, go ahead.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Wrap it up, yes.
Mayor Ordus?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Uh, Jonathan Bonilla, would you come up to the podium, please?
And, and Mayor, while he's coming?
There we go.
Yes, sir.
I've just been advised, and I'm sure everyone else has, by a, by an email that was sent to me, that you're going to be trying to do the job of our great city manager, I mean, our assistant city manager, so we want to wish you the best of luck.
Thank you, sir.
And remember, this commission is always behind you. Congratulations.
You got you, you got you, all right.
That's going to be amazing.
Yes, and I hope to make you all proud, and thank you, Mr. Dodge, Mr. Gonzalez-
Yeah, that's right.
For, for everything, thank you.
Mayor, before, before we leave, I, I usually say this at the beginning of the meeting, I have two things I need to announce, please.
Good.
Actually, this is the fourteenth annual Choose Peace, Stop Violence Week, September eighteen through twenty-two. Mayor, we always say peace, kindness, and-
Forgiveness.[1726.95]